I'd like to call this August 7, 2025 Board of Education Work Session to Order. George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Thatchek?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here.
All present.
We can all rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is we will be entering into executive session for...
To consider the employment of a public employee.
Thank you. George, can you take the roll?
No, I'm in motion.
Sorry, can I... Motion.
So moves.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Haley, seconded by Kevin. George, can you take the roll?
Sure. Ms. Thatchek?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Motion passes. We will enter into executive session at 6:20 and we will resume public session at 7:00 p.m.
We will resume public session at 7:05 PM. Next on our agenda, our strategic priorities. Our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. There are four strategic priorities to the plan. Transforming teaching and learning, aligning staff and resources, cultivating culture and climate, and leveraging funding and facilities. Our strategic priorities give actionable focus to our district's purpose and mission and guide the work of our strategic plan. Next, I'll turn it over to Dr. Reiba for recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Hausum. We're always excited, this first meeting of every August, we get to recognize our outstanding track athletes, so I'm gonna turn it over to our athletic director, Jason Kepler, to come up and get us started.
Hey, everyone. Before I begin, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to recognize these kids and all the great things that they did. Before I go, or get started, I just want to thank the coaching staff from the middle school. They pour a lot of time and effort into these kids, and they invest just so many hours into them, and every year, we see these kids grow tremendously from the start of the season to the end of the season. So, thank you guys very much. Before I bring Coach Blackman up to talk about the great things that her team did, I do at least want to kind of talk about a little bit of focus out of the athletic office, and one of those big focuses is trying to get as many three-sport athletes as we can get. And having said that, in the district, we have two three-sport coaches, and Coach Blackman is one of them. She coaches basketball, track, and cross-country for us, so I wanted to give her a little bit of an extra shout-out because she goes above and beyond, and she signs up for this stuff year-round. So, Coach Blackman, thank you. And would you mind coming up, talking about your team, please?
Okay. First, I just want to say thank you to all the parents for always staying on your toes. This weather this season was not the best. So, I know a lot of our track athletes are multi-sport athletes, and rain, snow, sleet, sunny skies, all happen in one meet, actually, that they were able to juggle all their schedules and always get the athletes, and communicate when the athletes could come. So, of course, I appreciate the parents. Also, I appreciate the Coach Koval for always giving us a good schedule. He's actually the one that got us into these meets in order to qualify for the state championship, so he's always talking to the other invitational coaches and making sure that we can always hold our position in there. So, thank you for giving the middle school athletes the opportunity, because without that, we wouldn't be able to. So, the first person I am going to recognize is Sammy Schultz. As you remember, last year, we were here, and Sammy was here, and you will, this will not be the last time you'll see her. She will for sure be here as a high school athlete. She ran in the state meet, the open 100-meter dash, and she placed 19th with a time of 12.87. The 200-meter dash, she placed 10th with a time of 26.67. I just wrote a little brief synopsis about Sammy. Every time she stepped on the track, Sammy brought determination, heart, and the mindset to be her best self. Her positivity and work ethic set a tone for the team. She lifted others with a smile and staying focused. Even after placing 10th in the 200-meter dash, she wasn't discouraged. She felt like it, her season was complete because she had beat, for the first time, a competitor from a different school. So, congratulations, Sammy, and I look forward to hearing about you at the high school. All right, so Addison also went down for the 100 hurdles. And ever since last year, as a seventh grader, Addison was always determined. She didn't care that she was a seventh grader, and she didn't care that she was competing against eighth graders. She always, she never backed down from the competition. She always faced every race with fearless focus. Her goal was the same every meet, just to win. And every day at practice, that never, never stopped, right? It didn't matter the weather, again, she just was like, "All right." She might have complained a little bit here and there, no, just kidding. But she laced up, and she didn't care. She just set forward and made sure that she could be her best. At the state meet for the 100 hurdles, she placed 15th with a time of 16.37. I know she's debating on doing track next year. I don't think it's an option, now that we're here together, so. And then Carly Cliché and Casey Jenderberg coming up. So, this is the four-by-two team that qualified for the state meet, and they took third with a time of 1 minute and 49 seconds. After the uncertainty that followed last year's events, no one knew what the future would be held. I know Sammy and Addison always said, "We won't be back here, who's gonna be our next two?" As Casey and Carly said at the end of this year, and I said, "It's your guys' job to determine who's gonna be the next two," right? So, I think Sammy and Addison, you guys did a nice job bringing Carly and Casey in and showing them that it could be done. So, Addison and Sammy, thank you for being the steady leaders to your relay team. Your guidance, I think, really opened it up for Casey and Carly. Carly was actually only a part of the relay team for about a week and a half, and she had no desire to go down to the state meet. So, I want to very much thank her parents, because she, they told her that it wasn't an option, and she was going. But we had Ava Anderson in our four-by-two team who got hurt, and she couldn't compete. So Carly stepped up and was able to help the team be successful. So, thank you for believing in yourselves, you two, because I know there was a lot of times that you were uncertain, you thought you were doing a terrible job, and Addison and Sammy always made sure that you felt like you were doing your best, so. And congratulations, girls. And then, one last person that couldn't be here today was Mariah Flannery. She placed for long jump for two years in a row. She could not compete either year, but I just wanted to give her a shout-out for making it to the middle school state meet for two years in a row.
Can I say something? So, if you guys don't mind, if you just don't mind, so, one of the things from, so, I love Danielle and Chris, they do a great job. One of the things that happened in the state school, the state middle school track meet, you have to take a lot of time to qualify for that and figure it out from an organizational standpoint, and there were years where we missed it. And so, just wanted to acknowledge Chris and Danielle for organizing that and getting their plans in order so that our students can have these opportunities, and for the board and everyone else to support them. It's a really, really incredible meet, and it doesn't go unnoticed, the adults that take the time to get that organized.
Okay, now on to the high school track team. Before I bring Coach Alexander and Coach Koval up, I do want to thank them and their staff for all their sacrifice, sacrifices they made towards the team, towards personal things. Being a coach is a full-time job and a very part-time salary, and you guys sign up for it year after year because you love kids, and you love to help them grow, and you love your sports. I also want to give another extra shout-out to Coach Koval. Earlier, I mentioned how we have two three-sport or three-season coaches in the district. We're lucky enough to have them both in the same room here tonight. Coach Koval, for the last couple of years, has coached cross-country, indoor track, and outdoor track, and he's been a coach for us now for 26 years. So, he's done it for a very long time. I think it might be some of the reason why he's bald a little bit, but, Coach Koval, special shout-out to you for all your time and your effort that you give to these kids. Would you mind coming up with Coach Alexander to talk about your team?
Thank you. Danielle and Jason kind of stole some of my thunder, so I was gonna thank everyone, but that's already been done, so I don't need to do that. But, I'm gonna ask my kids, if you're a hurdler, stand up. I just wanna, just saying, just saying, we have lots of hurdlers that go on. If you're thinking about it, all right, you guys, all right. To say, to say that this season is a season for the record books would be an understatement. At one point during the season, in my weekly emails, I said that this doesn't happen very often, but I get to talk about another record that got broken, and it happened almost every single week in so many different ways. So, I'm gonna go over all the records that got broke. There were five boys, five girls' records, and five boys' records. First off, on the girls' side, we had our distance medley, Hannah Jika, Marissa Small here, Madison Small here, Lindsey Magyar, all of them sitting over there broke that record, and that had, that had been a record that they set the year before, and then it got broke again, and I actually lost a bet on that one, I just remembered that. I lost a bet, and I bet they challenged me, or bet me, that if they beat the record, that they could glitter gel my head, so. I'm still cleaning up glitter in my house, actually. That's a true statement, I do still find it in random spots. Four-by-eight, girls' four-by-eight, got a record set, 91068, also a record that was set last year, same four girls. Dr. Reiba, I could say you're kind of a track guy now, because I read your letter, right? And a couple of years ago, you asked me, like, "I don't know what's good, what's a good mile," right? And Dr. Reiba's now running, and if I told you that our girls' record was 447 now, you would say, "That's pretty good," right? That's pretty good. And then Madison broke our 300 hurdle record, and I'll just say, like, for me personally, being the hurdle coach, that was a special record to get broke, and that was standing since 1996, and it is now a 4513. It was 4594, so that's a good record, that might stand for a while. And then Hannah, again, in the 800 with a 21037, which is half of a mile, still very fast. Hannah's not here today. And then, on the boys' side, our shuttle hurdles, there's more hurdles happening. Shuttle hurdles record got broke, Walkowitz Giuliano, Walkowitz and Dillon, 10118, and then our pole vault relay, our three-man pole vault relay, and our two-man pole vault relay, Jack Dillon and Nick Waite and Isaac Storm broke those. And then, another very personal record, the 110 hurdles, I never thought that it would get broke, and this kid constantly impresses me, 1379. I really think that one might not go down for a while. Jack Dillon, and then Jack Dillon again, in the pole vault with a 15-foot jump, which is really, really, really high. And then, kind of unofficially, Jack set our school, well, our all-time points on the boys' side, so all-time points and single-season points. And Mr. Griffin, I go all the way back to 2019, it was a special year for me, and this is one of those special years, with the great Joe Gillette and all those guys, and I never thought those points would get broken. And as a freshman, Jack scored 38.5 points, and then 189.75 points, 271.32 points, 355 points, his senior year, for an outrageous number, and I don't know, that might be a long time set. So, I'm gonna introduce all the state qualifiers now, so if you guys, I'm gonna have you all come up at one time. So, Madison Small here, four-by-eight, and four-by-four, come on up. Marissa Small here, four-by-eight, four-by-four, come on up. Lindsey Magyar, four-by-eight, four-by-four. Hannah Jika, who's not here, four-by-eight, 1600, 800, four-by-eight. I just gotta pause for a second and say, "That combination's insane, it's really, really hard. Day one of the state meet, she had to run all four of those, and I remember running around, trying to get ice and a garbage can, and I finally got it all put together to have her, like, stand in it, and she looked at me and said, 'Can I just go to bed?' And I'm like, "Yeah, just go to bed, that's a good idea." Lukey G., Luke Giuliano, 300-meter hurdles. Kayden Mobley, four-by-four. Jacob Gasser, four-by-four. Eric Bly, four-by-four. And Jack Dillon in the four-by-four, the 110 hurdles, pole vault, and the 400 meter. All right, so placing this year, our girls' four-by-eight placed and stood on top, were near to the top of the podium, at third place, and that's Madison, Marissa, Lindsey, and Hannah, and that, like I said, third place, so congratulations to them there. And then Hannah Jika placed third in the 16, and fourth in the 800, along with that, third-place finish in the four-by-eight. And she ended up scoring, the girls ended up scoring a total of 17 points, which placed them 11th overall at the state meet, out of 77 total teams that scored. That's not all the teams that were there, but those were the teams that scored, so congratulations, ladies. And then Jack Dillon down there placed second in the pole vault, so almost at the top of the podium, fourth place in the 110 hurdles, and eighth place in the 400. And Jack, single-handedly scored all 14 of our points, and placed us also in 11th place out of the 77-scoring team, so congratulations, Jack. I'm just gonna keep talking. Since Jack, I always make you wait till the end, I'm gonna have you go first this time. So, Jack is a three-time team MVP, two-time conference MVP, all the school records that he's set, points leader, and really impressively, he is gonna try to continue his career at Kent State to be a decathlete, because I'm not kidding you, the kid can do every single event. I cannot wait to see what happens, so congratulations, Jack. All right, I'm gonna keep talking. Madison and Marissa, all right, I know they want me to get emotional on this one, but I'm gonna try not to do that. So, these two have a special spot, because they dealt with me every day a lot. I had them second period in speed, strength, and wellness, I had them sixth period in I had them sixth period in pre-medical health. They're actually really, really smart, too. And then they had to deal with me at practice every day for a couple hours, and we got to talk every day and hang out every day, and I'm going to miss them. And there's, there's a hole there that I have to fill, and, and maybe we have some hurdlers that want to step into that spot, but.
I don't want.
It was a lot. Summer training, so last year, at the end of the year, at the end of the season, we talked a little bit and said, maybe it's a good idea if they try to run the eight, and they're very resistant to that idea. And so instead of trying to convince them, I just changed their training, and over the summer, they worked incredibly hard. And there were times where I'd be up here for something else, and I would see these two out on the track doing a workout, and I know I didn't give it to them, so I know they're, they're just getting work in all the time and doing hurdle work, and they really, 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 I mean, when I, when I say they put in the time, they put in the time. They don't roll out of bed every day being the best athlete in the state. They had to really, really, really work at it, and they did that, and they earned, they earned those, those spots. They did run the eight, and they actually got really, really good at it. And I never thought that that record, the four-by-eight record would be broken, and we talked about it, and then as the season started and we started to see what they were doing, we were like, this record could go down again, so. And so, and so it did. They ran three-hundred hurdles, the four-hundred-meter, the eight-hundred, the four-by-four, the four-by-eight. And these two are also going to together combine and go to Slippery Rock and continue their career, and they are going to walk onto that team as probably the two best eight-hundred-meter runners on that team, and probably down the road be one-k kids, but they still fight that idea as well. Congratulations, Madison and Marissa.
Lindsey Magyar, she just completed her sophomore season. She was a regional qualifier in the sixteen-hundred where she ran five-oh-nine. She was also a member of the state qualifying and school record-setting four-by-eight relay that placed third in the state, as well as the state qualifying four-by-four. This was her second time qualifying for the state meet. She qualified as a freshman and now as a sophomore, and she was also a crucial member of the school record-setting distance medley. Looking forward to coaching Lindsey in her junior year, and I know she will continue to have great success.
I mean this when I say I could talk all day about some of these kids. So I'm going to do two, two quick stories, alright? I'm going to start with Bly down there, another senior. Could not convince this kid to run a four-hundred, wouldn't do it, insisted that he was a hundred-meter guy, and I eventually convinced him when I did a workout and I showed him, it's like a four-hundred-meter predictor, and I showed him where I thought he could be, and he finally did it. I think it was the Berea, Berea meet, one of our very first meets, decided to run it, ran a pretty good time, a fifty-three, I believe it was. And then ultimately, by the end of the season, district meet, ran his best time, forty-nine-ten, got under the fifty-meter, or the fifty-second mark, which is tremendous, and he just accepted it and went after it and did an incredible job. So that eventually led him to being a huge part of why we went after the four-by-four relay, because I could play around with Jack and put him in a lot of different spots, but that was a spot that I felt we could really get pretty far in, and it, it worked out for us. And so Eric, congratulations with that. And now my next story, this is a fun one. Luke Giuliano, who's a sophomore, and when I say he's come a long way, I mean, he has come a long way. Two stories. So we normally, we sometimes split our team, and half the team will go to one meet, half the team will go to another meet. So I'm in Berea and he's in Buckeye, or somewhere, right? Was it Buckeye? Yeah. He's in Buckeye, and I get a video sent from one of the other coaches, and he's like, I don't know what you're coaching him, but he just did a three-hundred-and-sixty in the middle of the race. And I'm positive you're not supposed to do a three-sixty. I don't know what happened, but he was tripping and did a full three-sixty. Flash forwards, that's his freshman year. Flash forward to one year later, and he really committed to the training, committed to learning hurdles, and he's not the tallest guy, and the hurdles are very high. So his clearance is very, very minimal. There is no clearance when he clears a hurdle. And he slowly chipped away at his times, and they slowly came down, and then we get to the regional finals, which I couldn't believe we had, six hurdlers qualified to the regional, the regional finals, and he has his best race of the year and ends up in fifth place. And I'm crushed. I'm like, man, we were so close. And then I remembered that the state of Ohio gives two at-large bids, so the next two fastest times. And so we go out to dinner afterwards, and we're sitting there and we're like, what's going on? None of the results are coming up here. There was a tie in the three-hundred hurdles in Columbus, so they won't posting, they weren't posting any times, and it took forever until it finally came up, and then when it did, we were all sent, it's like one of my favorite memories, we're sent at the table and we just started to cheer, and we found out he, he grabbed that last spot, and now he's experienced the state meet. It's a hard place to run the first time you do it, and I'm thankful that he's able to do it as a sophomore, so he's getting two more tries to get at back there, so congratulations, Luke. Alright.
Kayden Mobley. Kayden just completed an amazing freshman season in track. He actually ended up the second fastest freshman in the state in the eight-hundred, running one-fifty-eight, and he was also a member of the state qualifying four-by-four team where he split under fifty. Kayden was this year's newcomer award winner for our track team, and I'm looking forward to seeing how he improves as his years go on.
Alright, we'll wrap this up here. So Jacob Gasser down there, he's a junior four-hundred-meter guy. Again, another one of the guys that we kind of had a question mark, weren't sure where, how things were going to go as the season went on and as it, as it started to play out, he started to cut time. And again, we were able to go after this, this four-by-four. He had a brief stint with the cross-country team because I thought I got him and I thought I convinced him to, to, to train, and then he sent me that email. But I think he's convinced that he's going to try to push and, and run some eight-hundreds next year and move up, because I think that's a good spot for him. But he's also going to stay at the four-hundred because I'm not giving up on him yet there. So again, he's part of that four-by-four team that qualified to stay, ended up eleventh. It's, you know, not where they want to be, but man, that was a really good, it was a really good field and a really good finish for them, so congratulations to all of you, and congratulations to our middle school track kids, because that's awesome. I think we have some people to fill some spots now. So congratulations. I'm going to hand you these, and then you're going to walk and shake hands. The best part about this year is I separated who's who from these twins, and I know the difference now. I didn't know that.
Alright. Well, thank you guys all for being here on one of your last summer nights. Congratulations to all of our students. Good luck to our graduated seniors. Some of you are going on to compete in college or just continue your studies, so we want to wish you well, and remember, you're always a Mustang. Now's a great time if anyone wants to leave and enjoy one of those last summer nights. We'll take a pause if anyone wants to go.
Nobody stayed.
Just Steve.
I've been watching some of those kids run, he says they're like in fourth grade. That's amazing. You know how to clear out a room.
Give him the opportunity. Thanks for staying, Maggie. Alright, next on the agenda is public comment.
I don't have any slips.
There's no public and there's no slips, so. We will keep right on going. Going to turn it over to George for the treasures report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausen. I have one item for your consideration tonight and then one discussion item. The first item for your consideration, it is, oh, it's part of the consent agenda. It's the cafeteria price increases for breakfast, lunch and à la carte, so the cafeteria prices. Annually going into the new school year, we're required to complete a tool called the Paid Equity Lunch Tool to measure our lunch prices against the USDA target lunch price. Since we do get a federal reimbursement on our lunches, we do have to follow the Paid Lunch Equity Tool. So based on that, based on that tool, lunch prices had increased by twenty cents this year. Last year, they increased by twenty-four percent, so with the cost of goods, the prices do continue to go up. However, as we did, as we did last year, we do have the option of a one-year waiver to not increase prices for the upcoming year. However, I'm not recommending that as we utilize the, I'm not recommending that we utilize the waiver because food costs are increasing annually, which may result in a greater deficit, and the waivers for one year, which delays the increase until the following year. The USDA target lunch price has historically increased annually, so if we keep delaying it, at some point, we have to catch it up, and it's going to be one larger increase versus the incremental increases. So the target lunch price for this year is four dollars, last year was three dollars and eighty cents. And that's an average of the breakfast, lunch for middle, for elementary, middle school and high school together. So looking at the attached exhibit, the elementary breakfast would be two dollars, the elementary lunch would be three-eighty, the secondary breakfast would be two-twenty-five, the secondary lunch would be four dollars and fifteen cents. So each, each one would increase about twenty cents. So on average, it'd come out to the four dollars. And then also, we have increases attached to the agenda for à la carte prices. There are only a handful of items that increase, the ones that are highlighted in pink, and the increases are just generated by the cost of the goods. We try and have a target profit, target ratio for profit, and to maintain that, as the price of goods increase, we have to increase the, the item as well. And then the last exhibit item is a promotion that the food service department started last year for Packers for a pick-two promotion, and they would like to continue that, and there's no price change for that. So continuation of that product to give Packers an incentive to come through the lunch line to grab two items for a discounted price. Any questions?
Questions or comments? I know George and I talked about it, and it just seemed right to do the increments. I know we've all felt the price increases at the grocery store, and I would just, I would hate for it to come out nowhere next year to raise, you know, potentially forty cents.
Yeah, because if we didn't increase it last year and had last year's increase plus this year's increase, we'd be looking at a forty-five, forty-five cent increase.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, George.
The next item I have is a discussion item, probably a quick discussion item, but it's that time of year where we talk about the OSBA, the Ohio School Boards Association Capital Conference Delegate and Alternate Appointments. We'll have it on the next meeting for, the board can nominate their delegate and alternate if they choose to. The Capital Conference is Sunday, November sixteenth through Tuesday, November eighteenth. The business, the OSBA Business Meeting for the delegate is Monday, November seventeenth in the afternoon. This appointment is just for the delegate for the business meeting as we're, we can send one delegate that would represent us in the Ohio School Boards Business Meeting to vote any, on any policy changes or discussions that they may have. But every board member is open to attend the Capital Conference if they choose to, if, if you choose to, just let my mission assistant, Melissa Lepage know, and, and Cameron Shelley Petrie as well, so we can get the board members signed up and registered for the conference. But this, this appointment's for the delegate, I know in the past, Ms. Bissell has served, Mrs. Hausen has served, and Mr. Miko has served as well, so. I think even Mrs. Cobain has served in the last couple of years as well, so. I don't know if you guys want to talk more about it, or would you appoint the delegate the next meeting? I'll let you lead, Mrs. Hausen.
Does anybody want to discuss it now, or?
I mean, Hope probably didn't know if he's going.
Right. Right. I mean, I plan on going.
I'm going, but I believe I'm a clear subject.
Okay.
So that would rule me out.
Okay.
I do, at this point in time, I do not plan on going.
I'd like to go.
Great. Okay.
I'd like to, but I'll know better before the next meeting, schedule-wise.
Alright, so I'll talk to Kevin and Haley, and we will decide at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep. And that concludes my report. If there's nothing else. Any else?
Any questions for George? Comments? Thank you.
Right, thanks.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Hausen. So I have one item for discussion, which is half-day kindergarten. So George, I think you have the spreadsheet up on your screen. If you want to click on the, the second tab, the option comparison for me. So as the board knows, I think in early July, I sent you an, an update that said, we're taking a look and watching half-day kindergarten numbers. And because at Kinsner and Surar Elementary School, they were low, and we were concerned about not getting enough students there that would justify running a section. So we wait because typically half-day kindergarten, there's a little bit later enrollment, and so for the time of this, wanted to share with you an update and some options to consider. So as we frame this discussion, obviously, at the will of the board, you could give any direction you want, but at minimum, what I am requesting is either, don't make any changes, keep it the same, or see where the numbers are at the end of the day on Monday, Cameron, and do the change that you and your team think is best for our kids and our school district. That's at minimum what I need tonight. So as you take a look, just a few highlights, and the board has seen this, but it'll list the enrollment. So we always try, we, we did this a couple of years ago because of space needs, but it's not about space needs now, it's about just low enrollment. So we've got, at Chapman and Whitney, we've got fifteen students enrolled in half-day kindergarten, twenty at Moraski, and Kinsner and Surar, what we're going to talk about the rest of the evening, is we have nine and ten. And we have none in the hopper yet. When the hopper, I mean, people could go on and preregister their kids on our lines, online system, we see them and we consider them in the, in the numbers until they come in and officially register. So right now, that's all we see is nine and ten are registered. So option A is, hey, we want to have half-day kindergarten at every single building, we don't want to make any changes, we're okay with, with allocating a full-time teacher to teach two half-day sections of nine kids and ten kids, okay? One of the reasons you would do that is you would say like, hey, we believe more kids will enroll, or it's okay, we don't want to make any changes. The fact of that is we don't see a lot of kids enroll specifically at Surar and Kinsner. We did four years of historical data. We average one half-day kindergartner that registers at Surar and Kinsner after the first of the year over the last four years. So the idea that, hey, if we wait, we're going to pick up some kids, the data doesn't say that happens, okay? But part of the plan would be to, depending on the board's direction, send out a message to all of our parents and say, hey, if you're going to register, register in the next, you know, get in the system so we know that you're there and we can make decisions. The two options that we have are listed in columns C and D. Column C is, just consolidates, eliminates half-day kindergarten at Kinsner and Surar, and that means we'd only have a half-day section at the remaining three buildings. We've worked with transportation, saying where would those nineteen students go, and you could see the breakdown there. And just as a frame of reference, twenty-five is our class cap for half-day kindergarten. So that says that we would have, Chapman would be closed for half-day kindergarten if, if that stays true, and that for the rest of the year, we would have six available spots for anybody that moves in throughout the year.
Can I ask a question about that?
Please.
When you, in terms of moving the numbers, did you do that based on location?
Yeah, so, so transportation took a look, because if we're going to, if we're going to eliminate these, we would have to bus the students. we would have to bus the students. So Transportation went through all of the kids and said, here's where they would go based on proximity and transportation.
Great, thank you.
The other option would be to just combine, eliminate Kinzner, a half-day kindergarten, and combine Kinzner and Surar together. So instead of dispersing the 19 kids throughout the other three, we would just take the nine and the 10 and combine them, that's where you get the 19 at. All Kinzner half-day kindergarten kids would go to Surar for half-day kindergarten. And so obviously, that's, allows us to have more open spots across the district. This places nine kids instead of 19 kids. That, that, that is how that would work. So there's a lot of data here and information, and all of you have read that, so I'll answer any questions for the sake of not going through it line by line. I just wanted to highlight a few things. So if you take a look at row six, there are some benefits there that we shared in terms of, of the buildings if each building would not have half-day kindergarten. So just as a highlight, at Kinzner, if Kinzner doesn't have a half-day kindergarten section, art could have an actual classroom instead of being on the stage. Provides additional space for the stage for overflow. There's more flexibility for events. Half-day kindergarten adds, you know, X amount of more kids, logistics that would help out. And that encore teacher that would usually do a half-day kindergarten, is it still 20 minutes, Jenny? Do they do, or do they do the full 40?
No, it's 20.
Okay. So 20 minutes, art, music, PE, they get 20 minutes of that a week, could be used to support in, in other areas. As you look at Surar, there's, there's more enhancements for Surar if half-day kindergarten isn't there. Jenny, I'm going to let you talk about number one, since that talks about kind of the encore rotation that's there, and you work directly with that.
Yeah, so what this means is that we have to take one of the third grade, I believe it's third grade, third grade classes and split it, because there's not a space to have another section for this third grade class. So one particular third grade, that, that third grade class, you know, 25 students maybe would be split up among the other two, so that encore teacher would take on additional. I think when, when we talked, Emily said, I can't remember exactly the number, but she felt like it was, it was still doable and safe. It would be over 25, obviously, though, in an encore class. And that results in giving them a percentage of the base to their salary, and I don't remember exactly the numbers, George, of how many, how much that is. But it would be an additional cost for three teachers that they would get in addition. It's kind of like a sixth class, but the way, because they're, they're not having to teach a whole different class, it's the same content, the same period.
It's like, sixth class, I think it's around 7,000 to 8,000.
That's a sixth class, but this is just a teeny bit less than that, I believe. It's a little bit less than that.
Okay.
Yeah. So three of them would have to get that, that cost. And then it's, you know, increasing obviously the, the class size for art, music, and PE for that period.
So as we take a look at the other parts, gives band and orchestra an additional space to practice and utilize. And it will, we've talked in the other parts about the staffing of how it would save us the cost of a long-term sub because we would reallocate our staff. So there's some challenges to the plan, right? As we talk about the, I would not qualify them as any positives to this, right? It's just, how do we deal with being financially prudent and equitable for student experiences across the district and the best use of our resources? But to take a look at the challenges you, you have with doing some of these consolidations, we understand that we are a week before school starts. And, and we've had preliminary conversations with our staff to say, you thought you were going to be a kindergarten teacher this year, and now you're going to be a, a teacher in another grade. And we understand telling families that you thought you were going to go to half-day kindergarten at Kinzner or Surar, and now you're either all going to go to Surar, or you're going to go to different buildings. Those are just challenges that we have to acknowledge and, and understand and, and respect that we are, if the decision is to make a change, we are creating difficulty for others. But that difficulty is based on the idea. We also have, have a responsibility to the taxpayers to say, you know, what is equitable class sizes across the district, and are, are their class sizes too low? So for example, outside of elementary school, because this doesn't happen anywhere else but half-day kindergarten once in a while, we have limits at the high school level. We are not going to run this class if the limit is below this level, because that is not good use of the funds to do that. And we find alternative ways for the kids to get some of those experiences. So I, I would be remiss just to talk about the nuts and bolts of here's the plan. There's real challenges, these are talking about kids, where they go to school. And we have to understand that I don't know these, I haven't looked at the sibling structure of these 19 kids, but I'm going to assume a good portion of them have siblings. And a good portion of those siblings are probably in elementary school, which means parents are going to have to deal with navigating two elementary schools, which is a challenge to, to take a look at. The biggest consideration that, that we really have to focus on is row eight, which is special education. So we have to remember that Surar is a building that is home to our moderate-intensive needs students. Surar, Chapman, and Maraski. So again, you've read it, it's listed there. If we remove half-day kindergarten from Surar, there's one student that we already know would have to go to Maraski to receive the services that student needs. At times, when families come in and they have a kindergarten child that has moderate to intensive needs, there's ways that we best serve them in a half-day program and utilize services outside of that in a, in a different way. So it reduces some flexibility. Where if you would keep it the same, that eliminates that need. Or if you move Kinzner to Surar, Surar would still keep that piece of it. So speaking on behalf of Andy, who we've worked with, if Andy had his pick, his pick would be either keep it the same or move Kinzner to Surar, because having half-day kindergarten at Surar Elementary School helps proactively address future enrollments or future needs that could be there. That would require new staff, new aides. And then the last thing there is the enrollment trends. The enrollment trends, as, as we've talked about, I have limited concerns based on the data of getting an upswell of Surar or Kinzner kids enrolling into half-day. But it does give us pause in terms of how many available spots that we have for remaining half-day kindergarten students. If we would go to the fully disperse, get rid of Kinzner and Surar and disperse, the, the data says, I, I think the average, if I look here real quick, the average is, we get 11 new half-day kindergarten kids a year. So if we, if we ballpark for that, in column D, that gives us plenty of room for that. In column C, it makes it challenging to do that, so. That is, that's what I wanted to share with where we're at with half-day kindergarten. Answer any questions you may have. Again, the, the plan of attack would be, based on the board's direction, send out a communication to all of our parents tomorrow, letting them know that we're going to give it to the end of the day Monday to see where the numbers are at. And then by Tuesday, we would make a decision and get communications out there, because on Wednesday, we have, even though it doesn't include kindergarten for everybody, but we do have open house, and if we're going to make moves, we want people in the right spot, so they're, they're ready for that.
So the question that came to my mind, if, if we go with column D, are there nine spots in full-day kindergarten at Kinzner? If those parents would opt to go ahead and move their child to full-day?
Let me look.
No? Okay.
Oh, it's in the other tab, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's in the tab.
Yeah.
There's like a couple and a couple.
Oh, yeah.
But it's not enough to cover all of them.
Okay. There's, there's eight spots for full-day. At Kinzner, okay.
Just overall.
At Kinzner, yeah. If we're stuck, and that, that's sticking to the 25 threshold that we like to do.
Well, because they've, they've added some people that are to be registered. So, so what, what you've got is, we've got, yeah, the to be registered, we've got one person that has just put in that says they want to go to another building for full-day.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, and then we've got three that are to be registered. So that means they've not come in, they're just in the system. So for example, if we would make the decision on Tuesday, technically, there's some more than six spots, there'd be seven spots, you know, available for that. I would say, you know, in terms of, if you're, just as a reminder, we did this two years ago. We did the same thing. We did not have Kinzner, we did not have Surar. Surar went to Whitney, Kinzner went to Chapman and Maraski. And we did that for space issues. And we had parents, you know, come and share with the board some concerns, and, and those are all valid concerns. But we did not see, that I recall, a, a major upswell in people saying that they didn't want to have half-day. But that could happen.
I want to ask about the document with pros for moving half-day out of Surar. And it says that band orchestra would have a space to practice. Where are they planning to do that if we don't move them?
I'd have to figure that, I'd have to ask Emily, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I mean, they had a plan last year, I'm trying to think of, I would assume it would be the same plan as last year.
They used to use the media center.
Yeah.
So I suppose that would be, that was two years ago, last year it was the half-day.
Yeah.
Kinzner was in the, in the atrium when you walked in.
Mm-hmm. My only question was to make sure we have a plan, and it sounds like it. If, when we make this announcement, parents are like, no, well now I want full-day, but there's not enough room, so how are we going to manage who gets that, who doesn't get that? Or if, like, they say, okay, we can't have our home building for half-day kindergarten, but I don't want to go to Whitney, I want to go to Kinzner, do we have a plan in place to make those accommodations? So that's, that's my concern about this. Because it's obviously going to be painful for the parents. So to be as accommodating as we can, given our options, I think would be ideal.
Yeah.
Looking at the data, I wasn't able to ascertain, how, how likely or unlikely is it that a, a new student would enroll without a half, at Surar for half-day kindergarten?
If I understand your question correctly, not likely.
Okay. Because my, my concern is, is that in the, in the discussion, if it did happen, we'd have to hire staff.
You're talking about with, with a student with a disability?
Mi caseload.
Yes.
We'd have to hire staff, and at that point, I, I'm, I don't, you know. So I, I'll start with, I thought everything in here was thoughtful and considerate, and is what we would want as a district. And we're making difficult decisions, trying to balance a lot of opposing constraints. But one of the things we're trying to do is to be fiscally responsible. And I want to understand how likely or unlikely it would be that, oh, the way things played out, we did all of this attempting to be fiscally responsible, and it didn't matter. Am I making sense?
I, I think if you take a look at, from that lens, column D does not put us in a position to where we would have future costs in the additional, the risk of additional costs would be almost nonexistent. Because we're not impacting, you are still keeping the third MI building online, and they've got the space and capacity to deal with that. And so that column D would be the one that would alleviate your issues of too many half-day kindergarten kids coming. It would eliminate the issue, as Michelle's talking about, of all the 19 people wanting to possibly go to full-day kindergarten, which we couldn't accommodate right now. And so, you know, column D is the one that, that alleviates that. The, the question going of, hey, are we open to making this change or just staying the course? That's, that's the part of taking a look at. If you go with column D, it saves you 50% of a teacher salary. So that's the part of, you know, that change, because it's half-day kindergarten. It saves you 50%, which I lose track. But if you take, oh, George, you had that in, here, I have it, you look.
A starting teacher salary is 45, 45, 47,000. So you would have savings there for half, and then of half-time teachers not eligible for healthcare, so you would have that savings as well, which would be about another 20-some thousand.
Has it historically happened? Was that, that a, an MI student enrolled?
It has historically happened more frequently in recent years. Last year was our worst year ever.
That it happened?
That it happened. The, the last couple of years have been challenging, but last year was the, last year was the worst year we had with late enrollees coming of all grades, including kindergarten, that had moderate to intensive needs, that we were not aware of or prepared for right before the start of the school year. But again, column D is, whether you do column D or not, it's, it's not going to have an impact.
Say that again, if you'd.
So if you take a look at, hey, we're not, we're not sure if we're going to have an influx of, of students with moderate intensive needs right in the week prior, the early weeks of the school year. In terms of space and services for them, we would be fine at consolidating Kinzner and going to Surar, because you'd have the special education space available, you'd have six additional spots available. Students with IPs or not, we've averaged one new student at Surar, so, so we would be okay. You would just have to consider as 19 kids versus 10 kids in a half-day kindergarten classroom.
When students, when, when families sign up for half-day kindergarten, do we have any kind of language that, that provides a warning or an understanding that if we do not have the appropriate number of students, that there may be a change?
I don't think we've done that. I don't, not that I know of, Kevin. It's a good suggestion moving forward.
I would like us, if I can, if we could do that, I think it would be a nice little warning.
Yeah.
Because I feel like two years ago, and maybe there is something in there, but they, people were pretty surprised by it when we talked about it two years ago.
Yeah, I like that, I like that suggestion, because this is not going to be a, a problem, you know, a problem that's going, going to go away until we say as a district, we're going to go to a full-day kindergarten for, for everybody.
I want to see if I understand this correctly, Cameron. I'm looking at column C and column D, and we're talking about the MI students.
Yeah.
Instead of dispersing the 19 over the course of the three remaining schools, if you disperse them over two, let's say Chapman, or Chapman or, or Maraski, and then Whitney for sure. Those buildings both have MI spaces, correct? Chapman and Maraski.
Correct, yes.
So if you left one of those open, that would eliminate the concern about having an MI student at Surar. Is that accurate? Like, extra enrolled, we're talking about if, what if MI students enroll, moving and having room for them?
Yeah.
If we don't fill Chapman now, with, and we don't fill Maraski now, and we front-load Whitney, does that not provide the same relief?
With, with, are you saying?
So we have MI spots open still at Chapman and/or Maraski, so don't fill Chapman. Leave them at 20 instead of 25.
Are you talking about column C?
I am.
Okay, I'm with you.
Yeah. So that would eliminate the, what do we do if we get five enrolled? We put them at Chapman. Or vice versa, Maraski's more in the center of town, we put them at Maraski. Does that accomplish the single?
It, it doesn't, because you then have the caseloads of MI kids that have different number requirements. So that's the other piece of it, is at the buildings, they are close to the cap of MI students in the building. So even if you would get that down to 20,
It doesn't.
You have this other issue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And what Bergen would have put on transportation, right, since they've gone through?
Well, is, are, are nine or 10 students, is that, is that, does that still give the students a good educational experience? Do we know that?
Just having nine or 10 kids in a classroom? Yeah. You, you know, the, there's, there's, there's different viewpoints of it, right? So, so there's the, the part of it of, it depends, the makeup of the students in the class, right? It depends of, do you have a good scope of students, and student skill sets? And so there is the positive, and I think the average teacher would say, give me nine, right? I'll, I'll sign up, and, and it's all good intention. And, and what we say from a research perspective is, lower class sizes have a positive impact on student achievement and, and, and growth when the teachers do things differently because of the low class sizes. Doing the same things you always did with 25 kids, you're just doing it with nine kids. The nine kids, research has shown, they're not going to have a, a difference. It's, I'm going to do different things because I have fewer kids. But you do run into that thing, you do. But you do run into that thing. You do run into that issue of based on the number of kids you have, where the needs are. It could be an extreme positive. It could be an extreme detriment. It makes a difference on the kids that are there. You know, speaking on behalf of the teachers, I think they would, now this is a general statement, is that because half day kindergarten is two and a half hours versus a full day, the ability to spend time with instruction and intervention and supports for our students in that half day program are more significant. I think the other part you could look at is we have, and we've had this discussion, we have, again, to be very simplistic, we have two groups of families that choose half day kindergarten. We have the group of families that say, this is my last year with my five-year-old. I want to have that time with them. We're going to the zoo. We're going to the Natural History Museum. We're doing these things. We've got all these experiences. And then we have another group of our families that can't afford the tuition for full day kindergarten. So it's a financial decision to go to half day kindergarten. And there's different variations, right? But in terms of the example. And so I think, you know, the small class sizes, you know, would be extremely helpful for maybe the families that really their kids would be better off in a full day program. They would want it. They just can't financially afford it, so.
So I'll, I think you guys have done an awesome job putting the data together. So thank you. It's very thoughtful and gives us a full snapshot and picture. My inclination is to think about the human impact on all these people. And then to think about how we as a organization can better communicate what could happen in the future and signal this for folks. But being a week out from school, it's a tough pill to swallow. Given the understanding of the financial ramifications, they're not that significant. I think walking in here, I was really leaning towards D, option D, or the option in column D. But boy, I'd love to, number one, get a little bit of credit for the school board thinking about these families and the school district. And I would, it would take a lot for me to not want to really give hard consideration to the option in column B, which is really to stay the course. It's, a week out is tough. A week out is tough on a lot of different people. And we can maybe figure out a way to recoup the cost that we would have saved in some other way.
Where do we have room for the half day teachers if we were to move them and not have them do that anymore?
So if we would eliminate the half day kindergarten program, the current kindergarten teacher that would have that would go and take a job that's currently filled by a long-term sub for a leave. And then that long-term sub, we, there's a lot of maternity leaves and different leaves. So nobody would be out of a job. It would just be reduced or moved to a different place and then finding, you know, assigning somebody to be that halftime position for kindergarten.
So that, close to the deadline, there's still positions for them to go to?
Correct. Yeah, it's a long-term subpositions that they would have, yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we're already budgeted for this.
Correct.
So this is not, this would be opportunistic, not, okay.
Do you, go ahead.
I was, I mean, we just do have to consider there's a little bit of a challenge hiring a half day kindergarten teacher right now.
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't have to do that in the current, in column B.
In column B, no.
No, we're already set.
You got it. Do you think it's possible that you actually might see the opposite if we stay the course? Kinsner has 67 full day kindergartners and Sarar has 50. That parents will opt for the smaller class and drop down to half day?
I'm not sure.
I'd be curious to see.
It's an interesting idea.
If that would happen, because I think there's, there are parents, like you said, that might see an advantage in that.
Is there lunch at half day kindergarten? The other thing that has been in the back of my mind since we started talking about this is these are 2020 babies. You know, these are the first two years, solid two years of their lives, they were living in a pandemic. And I just wonder how, if any, impact that will have. And if staying the course with the smaller class sizes would actually be a benefit for them.
I think we're all wondering the same, right?
I think, yeah.
I think there's a lot of question about what happens with this class of students.
Right, I would go back to Kevin's question to say, the probability that these lower class sizes are going to be a benefit for our kids far outweighs the potential of it, you know, not.
So to be clear, I could get behind column B, but we also need to have a communications plan going forward to let folks know this could happen and hopefully we can get ahead of this in the months of May and June as opposed to sitting in August. Well, I mean, what, just so I understand, if we stay with column B, which is make no changes, what do we have to communicate? For the future years. So yes, for future years. So folks know that this is an option, that this could change if we don't have enrollment numbers that are appropriate.
And I just looked up our kindergarten sheet and we do say that, but it says it for full day kindergarten sections consideration. It doesn't mention half day.
You know, one of the things just in discussion is the challenge we have with half day kindergarten, and again, this has been a growing challenge, is people wait later and later to register. But going on, if we have, if we improve our communication to say, we are going to look at this as of July 1st and we're going to make decisions as of July 1st because we can't wait to this last minute. I think that could be helpful and maybe motivate people to get out and register early.
Thank you for the thoughtful presentation, lady. Appreciate it.
Everybody's good?
Did we, did we give him direction?
I'm sure, I guess we wait till. So the options are, we, go ahead, go over our options.
Yeah, so the option is, is going on what Kevin suggested, stay the course.
Right.
Option, the second option is no, let's get through Monday and see where we're at. And if we don't get to whatever number, you know, kind of equitable numbers here, then as we've talked about, even though there's two options, option D is really the only feasible option as we've taken a look holistically at the data, so.
But we could get to Monday and nothing could change and we could still stay the course, though.
Correct. Yes. So that's what I need to know today. Stay the course or make a change.
Is there anything to vote on if we're just staying the course? This is a normal course in business?
Right. We just have to let Cameron know that we all agree to stay the course. And I'm comfortable with that. If the number, you know, come Monday, if they haven't changed, just stay the course. But I'm only one person, so.
But if the numbers change and we stay the, I'm.
We're still staying the course.
Yeah, I'm trying to make sure I understand. We stay the course, we stay the course.
Right.
Stay the course. We're saying we're cool with nine and 10 and if more people enrolled, then that's fine.
Right. You're good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Haley?
I'm good with that. Okay.
Okay. I appreciate the discussion and the guidance and I'll keep everybody up to speed. With that, Steve's going to come up and continue the discussion we started last time on tablets on the school buses.
All right, evening, everyone. So another discussion can happen here. So just wanted to further discussion, answer questions that were posed to me last board meeting and give clarification. So the question about insurance came up. I contacted our insurance company. They sent the information to the underwriters and it came back with no increase or decrease in any cost whatsoever to have tablets on the bus. They're researching best practices to give to us. I haven't gotten the information yet, but I did some research on my own. And these mobile devices, as they're called, or tablets, there's nothing specifically about them in Ohio Administrative Code or Revised Code other than it falls under the umbrella of drivers are not to be distracted by any two-way communication. Basically, it's aimed for cell phones. So any opinions that I saw, as long as it's not a two-way communication, as long as it's a basically a turn-by-turn navigation to hearken back to the Garmins, that nobody at home is going to know what I'm talking about, those types of items are okay. There is a location and a placement that that needs to be done so it's not obstructing the view. Both companies that I'm looking at in their installation costs would come in and consult with us on where those need to go, show the mechanics where they need to go. And then moving forward as they get placed in the buses, the mechanics would know not only how they're supposed to be hooked up, but also the placement of those brackets and the devices themselves. So that's from a legal standpoint, that's where we're at. From an insurance standpoint, that's where we're at. I know one of the other questions was as far as the usability of these and how user-friendly they are. I can tell you, I have not personally held these. I've seen the demonstrations from the two companies that were able to demonstrate their products. I know there was three companies last week, but the more research that I've been, I've been doing, I, for the reason we discussed at the board meeting, I've, in my mind, I've illuminated Sam Serra just because we would have to buy the tablets for the buses ourselves and then we would own those tablets. And the, while the cost would of course be as cheap as we want it to be, the cost of trying to find out why those aren't interfacing with the software and the time and just the the cost of ownership at that point, I think, would negate whatever savings we would see pretty quickly with that. So the usability I've seen with the two demonstrations that I saw is very comparable. You know, of course, the salesman, because they do their job, they'll tell you how it's so proprietary and it's very different. But I can tell you, regardless of the accent of the voice or the tone of the voice, it's telling you it's still turn-by-turn. You know, it's very intuitive as it was demonstrated to me, very user-friendly. Changing out, getting other routes is three or four touches on the screen, depending on the device that you have. We would be able to call on the, call to the driver and say, bus 78 isn't here today. You need to pick up half of 78's route. You do the first half, another bus does the second half. Now we would have to have them come in, grab the route book and follow the piece of paper. With this, a couple touches, route 78 comes up and there's your turn-by-turn navigation for the driver without having to come in or have a piece of paper in their hand. They, all of the systems or both of the systems, I should say more specifically, do you have the ability to turn off the visual? Or have, so it's just the audio running or you can have both running at the same time? The reason for that is that, of course, these are national companies selling tablets across the nation. Certain states have certain rules about visual being accessible while the bus is in motion or not. So these are very adaptable systems to whatever, not only what the current legal system would be, but if there was something to come down from the state legislature to say, we've had too many bus accidents, tablets now have to have no visual while buses are in motion. Both the systems do have the ability to adapt to those types of changes as well.
And Steve, before you go on, I just linked in your board docs, Steve's slides from before. So maybe if you go to another agenda item and go back, it should be there or refresh. Keep going, Steve.
And I did add to that slide, there's a second slide there that does a Transfinder versus CalAmp side-by-side comparison for pricing as well. Lastly, I know it was asked to talk to the vendors to see if there was a possibility of us having some pilots of these devices. Both vendors were amenable to that. However, I do need to make you aware, with a three-week shipping of the tablet, another, let's say for sake of argument or discussion, because we don't want to argue, for sake of discussion, another three to four weeks to pilot, we're now looking at October to order these. Realistically, these will not be here and ready to go fully implemented until Christmas if we do that. It's just, you know, once these things are in full motion, now we got to take some off routes and, and, you know, that, some of the concerns, of course, with doing that are variables remain the same. We're going to have to install them no matter what we do. But now you're looking at two months plus installation versus ordering now and installation. I'm not saying either way what my preference is going to be. I think that there is validity to piloting these systems because of the price tag and looking at them and seeing, get some feedback from the drivers on them. It just comes with a consequence of it's delaying the implementation of this device later on into the school year. So again, no judgment on that on my part, just the facts that you would be delaying it for maybe two months. If we chose to not purchase anything tonight and go with me contacting the vendors to get the piloting program, I would not be back next month. It'd be a few months before I'm back to give you my recommendation based off of that feedback.
I just want to make sure I understand this data correctly. For Transfinder, it's a three-year contract and it's approximately $50,000 more than a five-year contract with CalAmp.
CalAmp, yeah.
CalAmp. And you don't see, at least from talking to them, there's no significant difference in usability?
No. So the difference that you're seeing reflected, though, thank you, I neglected, is the cost of ownership versus the cost of renting. So as you can see, that first year with Transfinder, that cost is way up. It equalizes to Synovia's in year two and three. It gets in the ballpark. The reason is with Transfinder, we're buying the tablets outright from another company called Zonar. All right. So they work hand-in-hand, which is also a preferred provider with OSC. That's really the difference is the implementation year as well as the duration of the agreement itself. As far as, you know, the renting versus owning, the longer I've been in this position and maybe just age and experience and all of that that's coming to pass, I'm less inclined to own technology today than I was three years ago. Especially because you never know what the software is going to be doing. I did talk to both reps with Synovia, I mean, with Transfinder, of course, it's an all-in-one package. We're already using the routing software. All the pros are still there. When I did talk to the vendor and say, okay, what if I have some bad tablets? I mean, it happens. The response was, well, we'll go to bat and get you some of those replacements. Whereas with CalAmp, because it's a rental, yeah, if there's some bad tablets and something, then they swap them right out because we're renting instead of owning. Same thing if there happens to be an upgrade. Famously, tablets, as soon as you get them, all of a sudden, as soon as you pay that off or whatever it is with the cell phone company, now that next upgrade's available and you're right back to where you were. With CalAmp and renting, if there's an upgrade that somehow the software's not able to be compatible, that would all be covered under the agreement that we get the replacements and the tablets that are needed. With Transfinder, there would have to be some kind of replacement fee. Because we own those day one. And there is the option with CalAmp to buy after five years. But trying to stay true to my argument, I don't know how valuable they'll be after five years and for the purpose that they've been purchased for, so. That's the major difference between the two.
Thank you.
Have you, I know you have, but other districts that have used it, is it as simple as, hey, it don't work, replace it? Because the salesman will tell you that and then when you try to replace it, well, we're out of them. It's going to take five days.
So I have talked to some of my counterparts and, yeah, they both said the companies have been receptive, but the ones I know that have Transfinder, they said it was a little bit more of a process to get it replaced. Ultimately, it was, but it is a little bit more of a process because you own it. Versus, hey, this isn't working. We rented it. Just swap it right out.
And is that in the contract?
I have not read the contract line by line because I haven't seen it yet. I've just seen the quotes.
Because everything you've said makes sense and, you know, in my day-to-day job, those are the trends also. And, you know, the real world intrudes and you can have all of the, hey, it's a lease, get it replaced. And it's like, oh, yeah, we'll replace it. There's 10-day lead time, right? So I just want to make sure we're clear on the. So I just want to make sure we're clear on, on the expectations with the company that if we have problems, it's 24 hours, whatever.
Well, and I did talk to both about getting some spares. So there's at least two spares that are built in. Now, as the transportation world ebbs and flows, as previous discussions that we, I think we've had enough discussions tonight, we don't have to get into previous ones. As we have more buses that possibly are not used, we can always keep renting those or with Transfinder, we've already purchased it, we could just keep it. So we have a little bit more on stock. I, I, I want to have some in stock in case, but I don't want to have so many in stock that we're not being fiscally responsible either.
Yeah, I'll just, anecdotally, I'll share the story that made me, that's making me scratch my head. A friend bought a new car, drove it off the lot. The next day, the indicator, the engine light came on. He called. Yeah, we can get you in in three weeks. Brand-new car. And it's not that, you know, I mean, again, engine light coming off the next day on a brand-new car, car is concerning, but the part that's really concerning is, is I just bought this brand-new car and the soonest you can service this brand-new car is three weeks back. So, but I'm, I'm sure you'll be on top of it.
You should have rented.
You should have leased it.
Did I hear you correctly that, that implementation would take place in December?
If, if we, if we do the pilot program, that's, that's my guesstimate. It's, you know, just, at, at that point, it's how long do we want to pilot them for? And again, I'm not opposed to the idea. It's just we're, we're delaying the purchase. I know I can hang on to some of this pricing because of course the, you know, the salespeople, you know, they want to have their boats for the summer. So they'll hang on to the pricing as long as possible. I, I don't know how, how fast some of these prices will hold. Eventually, they're gonna have to go up.
I'm typically all for trying something before I buy it, but I'm really struggling to see what we're gonna find with, with Transfinder that's going to make it worth an extra 200-some thousand dollars. Especially with like the renting versus the owning. I see a lot more potential hiccups with owning. But I just, I'm looking at the price and I'm, I just, I'm struggling to see how it could be $200,000 better. And I'm just extrapolating from the data that's here. So that's where I am, is I love to try things, but I just don't know what I'm gonna see.
Other comments, questions?
Can you expand on that?
Yeah, I'm trying to do the math.
The 200, what?
150,000? I just, that's a three-year contract, so then we roll it all over again. No, we just shy of 200,000. Start it again in year four and it's another 100,000, another 30,000. So we're literally talking $250,000 more for Transfinder. Unless we have a toll for longer, then it's the 47. Maybe, maybe not, we don't know.
I, I, now I understand your.
Three years versus five years.
Yeah, I'm just really, when the five years is already cheaper, it's a rental, we're here.
Or locked in.
We're here, like, I'm really struggling to see why we would, we would do the other one. Even though there's some benefits in terms of its compatibility with our program, I get that. That's where I'm stuck, is I just don't see how it could be worth that much more.
And, and I know that this is, so I don't disagree with you, so I don't want to push my, you know, press my luck here, but it is a bit anecdotal for us, I mean, in the business department. But I know we would have a lot of phone calls because also going with Transfinder means going with a whole new parent app. That would also be, need to be switched over halfway through the year. So, again, that's nowhere on here as a line item for cost and, you know, it says business services outside my office, but that is something that we had to deal with and that would be something we would have to deal with again, doing some kind of changeover, especially the middle of the year.
Yeah, I'd like to avoid that if we, if we possibly could. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I think we need to talk through the, the pilot thing. My, my concern is, is that on the one hand, everything you discussed makes sense about the delay. My concern is, is without hands-on evaluation by our bus drivers, we find, we find out as we use it that there are substantial or some kind of conflict or usability or what have you. I mean, in my, in my mind, I'm, I'm expecting it to be like Waze or Google Maps or what have you. And I know whenever I plant the signs for graduation, I, I get my address list and I put it in and I upload it to my phone and as soon as I, as soon as I plant the sign, I tell my phone, click, and it tells me where to drive. I'm assuming that's the level of feature, but I have no idea. And I'm not, and I'm not the bus driver, right? So I'm, I understand the, the rationale for making a decision, but I don't want to regret the decision. So I would, I would advocate to get the pilot and, and take our time to do it well. We've, we've been doing it the way we have for.
Those, let's do it more months now.
I'd rather do it well and do it right and do it once than revisit this in five years.
Right, the only thing different is we are adding 10 floating bus drivers that we haven't had in the past. So it's not like these, they're gonna, not gonna be relying on these pieces of paper. It's, my only concern is safety. Have you talked to other districts about how they work? Like, is it like Waze and Google Maps?
Yeah, I mean, they just say it's the turn-by-turn. You can see the line and, and some of them have a square to indicate where the stop is at. Some have a, a circle. You know, it, it really is a difference between, and I can't tell you why I use Google Maps more than Waze. At one point in my life, I used Waze and just went over to Google Maps and I never went back. I don't know. But, you know, there's some, yes, I would say that's an accurate comparison that they, they pretty much do the same thing, that there's just some bells and whistles that are different. Again, I'm not advocating not getting the pilot program, but the other thing I want to bring your attention in the comparison is in that pricing, Transfinder does not come with a student attendance piece. And CalAmp, Synovia, does as well. Again, I don't, I don't think that goes to bear with the current discussion, so I'm not trying to aggress it, but I did want to point that out as you go to head-to-head comparison. Even, even if we do the pilot moving forward, I would have to get a revised quote for Transfinder to add a student attendance piece, which is tablet there, barcode scanner there. We would issue barcodes to, as nervous as it makes me. We would issue barcodes to the students and even in the elementary school, we would have to come up with some kind of, you know, basically from what discussions I've had, a pocket, you know, that those things stay in and then they get attached to the, up the backpack.
And then say a backpack tag.
And as students come on, they actually scan in and that's real-time data about who's on that bus as well. They both have that option. I just wanted to point out the quote for Transfinder, they did not put that in there. I can, I can have them add that, but it's just gonna increase the overall cost as well for Transfinder.
So, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting we pilot both. I'm suggesting that if, before we purchase.
CalAmp?
CalAmp, we test it.
That one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Not what I was picturing.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking.
So Richard, I, I would, I 100% agree. I think the, the downside of that would be if, if CalAmp doesn't perform for the drivers and we're, we're kind of back to square one with one option. But I would agree, we can't, I, I would need to test them out before we buy them. So it just pushes your timeline back should you not, should the drivers not like the product.
So how many, how many units would they let us pilot?
I didn't get specific with them, but I, I could say five. For sake of the, of the discussion. I, I can press them for five and see where we end up.
How many drivers do we need? How many part-time or fill-in drivers do we have?
Suggest and say, I hope that if that's the case, then our floating drivers would be our pilot drivers. That's just what I would hope, but I leave it up to you.
I'll forward that request to them.
How many drivers do we have?
As, as of right now?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, with the, because we've had some added in.
Or better yet, how many buses do we have?
We have seven, well, we're getting 81 devices.
I think 81 tablets is a great pilot.
Sure that will go over well.
You can always say, if it works, you got the contract and we're done.
So is that the consensus of the board pilot, the one program?
Everyone's good with that.
Yeah, I think I'm.
Everybody's good.
All right, so with that, George, we're gonna need your help because number two, we put that on there as a placeholder just in case the board wanted to move forward. So we don't need to vote on that, so how do we work that?
There's been no action item taken on it yet, so we could just remove it from the agenda.
Just remove it, okay. All right, so we'll remove number two, which was voting on a potential contract.
So how long will we pilot? Like, what are we gonna?
I can talk to the vendor and see what the normal is. I would say a month or so.
So, before I hit delete, deleting number two off the agenda, correct?
Correct.
If you refresh it, it is no longer there.
All right, so Steve, why don't you keep going with your?
Steve, if I can, just real quick, I mean, the pilot needs to be as long as it needs to be. It doesn't, if, if two weeks is plenty and you're able to come back with a, with a recommendation, then I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I don't want to speak for the rest of the board. But we, we need to do it. We need to do it well, but we don't need to have a predetermined, it has to be this long.
Okay.
Right?
All right, thank you for the direction. The next item, which is now number two, is a people transportation agreement with a company by the name of TLC for the 25, 26 school year. The, this is another almost, well, just like suburban. When, when we can't transport or it doesn't fit into our transportation scheme, we do hire third parties. This is another company that we could have at our disposal for that. The next item is a resolution by recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education accept a proposal from GPD Group for K-12 planning services not to exceed $49,500.
Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Haley, second by Michelle. Steve, will you explain what we're voting on?
I, I would love to, but I don't think I'd do it nearly as well as Dr. Riba.
Dr. Riba, then? I mean, I could take a shot.
So, GPD has worked with us for about a year and a half to help support community engagement to look at a potential bond project for new elementary schools. As the community knows and the board is well aware, we've had a, a year and a half process with the Elementary Facility Planning Committee. We've held town halls and we've committed to being on the May 2026 ballot for a combined bond and operating levy issue. And there is now a lot of work between August and May to get all of the things in place that are needed to get in place to be ready for this bond issue. So this is an agreement with GPD. This does not mean that they're our architect. That comes after a bond is passed and, and that's determined at a later date. This is just who we are recommending based on our partnerships and the work that they've done together to work with us on all of our pre-bond work. So the board has seen in my board updates, the timelines, the spreadsheets of all the things that we have to do, the OFCC and the OUT program, they help with that. They're, they're helping, you know, we had a community member share an idea in lieu of a field house. They're helping provide information in that realm. We talked today about soil borings at our tests, at our potential building sites to look at the suitability of those grounds. And you can go along with the fact of, they'll now start working with us on making sure the scope of what we actually need in the buildings, the number of classrooms, the number of art rooms, gymnasiums, things of that nature. Looking at funding, construction costs, timelines, all of that pre-bond work, helping to develop visuals for us to share with our community about here's what a new elementary school can take a look at. It will also support, although we probably did this about five years ago, four, five years ago with the enrollment study, it will provide another enrollment study that can give us a determination of where we're going as, as a community. So that's a, that's a broad overview of some of the scope of services that will get us from August to May and then get ready for the bond project that will be on the ballot.
Any questions, comments?
And it'll be out of the O7O fund.
George, can you take the role?
Ms. Dachek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hauser?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then the one thing I'll add, at the August 25th meeting, I have an appropriation adjustment to appropriate the funds for the O7O fees.
The last item is a Surar Elementary Playground. And this is a resolution, a recommendation of the superintendent to accept a proposal from Vasco Asphalt for excavating and paving Surar Elementary School Playground not to exceed the amount of $58,772. And this pricing is available through the NCPA Consortium, which is part of the Omnia Partners Company.
Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Haley, second by Kevin. Can you explain?
Sure, so.
Paving over Surar's playground.
So as, as part of the desire to relieve the congestion that is at Surar currently, we're reconfiguring that whole parking lot. And what the, the concept is returning the parking lot to, as you're facing the building to the, the left, instead of it being a playground, it is a parking lot. Teachers can park there, guests can park there. If there's events, people can park there. And actually creating a playground that is connected to the, an asphalt playground to the mulch playground that's in the rear of the building.
Any questions, comments? Right, George, can you take the role?
I, oh, sorry. The contract says Stripe, Stripe, Stripe Playground can be added if desired. I'm assuming that's not going to be added.
No.
Thank you.
We'll do that in, in-house.
Ms. Dachek?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hauser?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
We do have a couple items under curriculum. First, it's a recommendation that the following student be placed for a classroom environment field experience at Whitney Elementary School assigned to Jamie Yonkoff from Franklin University. Item number two is a recommendation as well for a student to be placed for an integrated classroom and field experience at Kinsner Elementary School with Susan Baraga, again, from Franklin University. Any questions on curriculum? Under Student Services, the first item is to enter an agreement with Monarch Schools of Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau for special education-related services for the placement of a student with disability for this upcoming school year in the amount of $98,026.20 with extended school year costing $8,168.85 for a total of $106,195.05. Under number two, this is an agreement with Applewood Centers, known, operating a school known as the Gerson School for students with disabilities for this upcoming school year in the amount of $49,388 for the special education and related services provided to each student there. We do have a foreign exchange student recommendation for tuition-free enrollment of a foreign exchange student from the Czech Republic. Number four is a recommendation to enter an agreement with PSI affiliates in the amount of $87,141.60 for social worker services to, social worker services to service students in the Strongsville City Schools district-wide. So as you know, we have two social workers in the district. One is a district employee and one is a contracted employee through PSI and that's what this one is for. The next one, under item five, is again, enter an agreement with Kids Link LLC for placement of a student with disabilities. Part of this was for last school year prorated with the start date. And then number six is for this upcoming school year, placement of Kids Link in the amount of $98,000. Any questions on student services?
Dr. Riba, does number five need to be corrected for the school year?
Let me look at the exhibit. The exhibit has the same.
24, 25, 26?
25, 26, if the start date is August 11?
Number six needs to be updated. Number six needs to be updated. Yeah, and the term is the August 11, 2025, yeah. Hold on one second. No, because then it says... Dates of service, sorry, it says 9/1/2024. I believe this is correct from what Andy shared with me.
Okay.
But we can correct it in the future if it's wrong, because it's, in the term, it's got the date of last year. It's got both. So I would just suggest we approve it as-is until we can confirm, and then if we need to correct it, we can correct it at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, then I'm going to have Jenny do the human resource report.
Thank you. Under Human Resources, we have the following items for your consideration. We have resignation for a certificated staff member, resignations for non-certificated staff members, resignation for a certificated athletic supplemental contract, resignation for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. And then we have, you don't have to accept this one if you don't want to. We have a retirement for one of our leadership friends over there behind the camera, so congratulations to Scott, but he'll be with us all year, so. We have appointments for certificated staff, appointments for non-certificated staff, appointments for non-certificated substitutes, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts, appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts, appointments for non-certificated onboard instructors. We have change in status for non-certificated employees, change in status for certificated athletic supplemental contract, changes in status for non-certificated athletic supplemental contract, stipends for our instructional coaches, stipend for resident educator coordinator, leaves of absence for certificated staff, leaves of absence for non-certificated staff. We have volunteer chaperones and volunteer coaches. And then we have two revisions for year consideration. A revision to the agenda on February 27, 2025, under the Human Resources Report, under Appointments, Certified Athletic Supplemental Contracts. I think we just mixed up the names here. Chris Koval is revised from Assistant Cross Country Coach to Head Boys Cross Country Coach at Strongsville High School. And then the second one is from the same agenda, February 27, 2025, under the Human Resources Report, under Appointments for Non-Certificated Athletic Supplemental Contracts. We had a revision to Aubrey Alexander from Head Boys Cross Country to Assistant Cross Country Coach at Strongsville High School, and that concludes the Human Resources Report.
That concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Can we be mischievous and vote no on those changes?
Maybe not after tonight, I don't know. Okay, moving on to our Consent Calendar. Adoption of Consent Calendar, action by the Board of Education in adoption of Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as Type Action Consent, which items constitute the Consent Calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or the superintendent requests that such items be removed from the Consent Calendar and voted upon separately. Does anyone have anything they need removed and voted upon separately? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
I sound so eager, and everyone else sounds so... George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Board Policy, third reading, first and second readings waived of a revised Policy 6320, Purchasing and Bidding. Any questions, comments on that?
Give some context if you want.
Sure.
This policy was revised in February 2025. Prior to that revision, it was revised in 2019. In 2019, there was a section of the policy where we kind of made a Strongsville-specific edit, where we added a threshold to blanket purchase orders of 25,000. When the policy got revised in 2019, they all put it back to the original template from their version, which overwrote our change in 2019. And then, when they usually make a change to a policy, they'll flag what's changing based on their templates. Since this was our specific, that wasn't flagged, so it kind of got, we didn't realize that it got taken out until we were looking for something to reference the policy. So we're putting that threshold back into the policy, it should have never came out to begin with. So it's kind of correcting that overwritten in 2000, or from February.
Okay. Questions?
They going to make sure not to let it happen again?
Yeah, we're going to read the entire thing, rather than looking for the red changes.
Yeah, I mean, it's also incumbent on them, we pay them for the service.
Right.
I would think they...
Yeah, and I didn't realize, that was the first time that happened to me, I didn't realize that they, when they send us those changes, if we had made any specific changes, that it just reversed back to their original template. I thought they'd take our templates and make those edits, but...
Okay.
Found out this way.
Thanks, George. Next, we have Board of Education.
Do we have to vote?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yep. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stachek, seconded by Mr. Griffin. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, Board of Education, other, any miscellaneous from the board?
I have one. I, a resident informed me that Strongsville Spirit Shop at the Rec Center, which has been run by Mrs. Sue Wallach, and I, my tie is from the Strongsville Spirit Shop, and everybody's, a lot of everybody's Mustang gear is from the Spirit Shop, but Sue, the Spirit Shop is celebrating its 25th birthday this year. Not Sue, Mrs. Wallach is not celebrating her 25th birthday, but the Spirit Shop is. So if you are at the Rec Center and you get a chance to see Sue or anyone working there, wish them a happy birthday.
Thanks, Rich. All right, any other miscellaneous?
I just want to wish our Mustangs a happy first day of school. Our next meeting is after school starts. I know, we're not meeting, we've got like a little break here. So happy first day of school to some very happy students, I'm sure.
We have another week for the sales tax holiday.
Yes.
So take advantage of it while you can.
And sign up for Happy Birthday.
And congratulations to Strongsville for being voted number six in the country as a desirable place to live. That was talked about a lot today.
Yes, it was.
All right, any other miscellaneous? I'll send you the article.
Who voted?
It was like Realtor.com?
Yeah, it was, it was Realtor.com, but CNBC picked it up, it was on 1100 this morning. They interviewed Mayor Persiak about it, so it's got a lot of traction.
Yeah, it wasn't a vote, we just have the most, 44149, according to Realtor.com's methodology, is the number sixth most attractive place to buy a home right now.
Who hears in 44136? Dear Medina, you don't even have to say.
Yeah, what was going on in that list?
Any other miscellaneous? All right, hearing none. Next, Executive Session, we do have need to go back into Executive Session to...
Consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes, as well as to consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stachek, second by Mr. Griffin. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stachek?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries, we will enter into Executive Session at approximately 8:55. We do not see a need to resume public session, so I just want to wish everybody a great night.